Good evening, welcome to a meeting of North Penn School District's Board of School Directors, September 10th. Tonight's our regularly scheduled work session. The meeting is being videotaped for community cable channels. Individuals attending this meeting and intending to speak to the board should be aware that they're being videotaped. In order to meet the requirements of the Pennsylvania Sunshine Law, it is necessary to record the names of all citizens who speak to the board during the meeting. To assure compliance with this requirement, it is essential that those planning to address the board come to the microphone, state their name and address, and sign the audience's logbook. Members of the audience are asked to limit their comments and questions. To allow time for all those who wish to speak to the board, the board president may ask the individual to yield the microphone to the next speaker, and this is in reference to Board Policy 8340. Good evening. I'd like to start this meeting off with a pledge of allegiance led by Mrs. Murphy. Would you mind?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to their republic, which stands as one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, let's start with some information. That's what we're here for. ECP is running the federal approval of a PA waiver for no child left behind requirements. Who's going to handle that?
Dr. Holman and I will be handling that. We do have a PowerPoint. Dan, do you have that queued up?
Yeah.
This is meant to be informational and educational to the board, and very importantly to our community, those who are present this evening, and also those who are watching this via television. Just as some background, the ESEA, the Elementary and Secondary Education Act, was enacted by Congress in 1965. It's federal. It was intended to close the achievement gaps between students, and particularly address issues with economically disadvantaged students. It does include our Title I, Title II-A, and Title III funding, and you hear that from time to time when we talk about sources of revenue. The most notable reauthorization of the ESEA was in 2010.
That should be 2001.
Yeah, that's correct.
Yep, that's backwards.
Which was the No Child Left Behind. So 2001, we had No Child Left Behind. It became nicknamed that ESEA, the Elementary and Secondary Education Act. The No Child Left Behind did set national accountability measures for public schools. It has not been reauthorized. They keep talking about reauthorizing ESEA, but they haven't done it. They haven't done it since 2007. So given that, it was then determined that states should send the specifics of accountability measures, and each of the states was given an opportunity to apply for a waiver of the No Child Left Behind requirements. This next slide goes into some detail on what were the Pennsylvania's accountability provisions under No Child Left Behind, and specifically, 100% of the students must be proficient in math and reading by 2014. And that was overall, and also in the subgroups. The subgroups were by race or ethnicity, by IEP status, English as a second language, and economic disadvantage, and there was a minimum size of 40 to be an accountable subgroup. It also said that 95% of the students must participate in PSSA exams, and the elementary and middle schools must have a 90% attendance rate, and the high school must have an 85% graduation rate. Likewise, it said that schools not meeting targets would have labels of school improvement or corrective action, and there would be escalating consequences. So that was all a part of No Child Left Behind, and what specifically applied to us here in Pennsylvania. So now we get to a juncture where they haven't reauthorized it, instead they've said you could apply for a waiver. And, in fact, Pennsylvania did apply for the waiver, and just very recently was granted that waiver. So let's get into some of the details of the waiver, and I'm going to turn it over now to Dr. Holman, our Assistant Superintendent.
Thank you. When we look at the waivers, go ahead.
Well, before you take off.
Yep.
So, any large district that has a subgroup of 40 or more in any one of those categories, now that number has to count towards the accountability provision.
That is the number that was under the old AYP system. If you had 40 or more in a subgroup, then they counted.
They want 100% proficient in math and reading by the end of next year.
Correct.
That is what the current Elementary and Secondary Education Act says.
Now, in North Penn, we're doing far better than the average, but they do realize like 1/3 of the state has not met that, right?
Correct.
And that's why they were giving opportunities to have waivers put in by the states.
Right.
Because remember, they set those targets back in 2001, and they said by 2014, you need to have 100%, and they kept on escalating the bar.
I want to make sure, I mean, even the university is going to say, wow, having everybody proficient is our goal.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
But as of today, I know it's, I think it's actually more than 1/3, but I have not even compared that.
Right, exactly. And as Kurt said, because Congress has not acted to reauthorize the law several years ago, the President and Secretary of Education said that states could ask for waivers from those provisions in that slide if they met certain criteria in their waiver application. I think somewhere in the ballpark of 42 or 43 states, I know it's somewhere between 40 and 45 states, is it 41?
Last week, the NCIEU discusses it.
Yeah, have had approved waivers by the US Department of Ed. So really, Pennsylvania is joining what the majority of the country has already put in place.
But, but, the idea of a subgroup being 40 or more, all medium-sized, the larger-sized districts getting disadvantaged because...
Under the old system, yes.
Under the old. Now, they made some changes.
This is changing, yes.
They made some changes to it, and we're going to get into that.
Right, yep, absolutely.
It wasn't disadvantaged.
But you're, and you're absolutely right, because what would happen is, in a larger district, and particularly a larger, more diverse district, it would not be uncommon, I don't remember the number off the top of my head, but North Penn High School probably had about 22 or 23 targets that they needed to meet, and if you missed even one of them, you did not make adequate yearly progress. And so, one of the things that they wanted to give the states flexibility to do was come up with their own accountability system that they believed more fairly represented the level of achievement of schools in their state. So that's what the states were looking to do. However, there were key requirements that they were looking for in those applications, and that they said they would not approve the state's application if those requirements were not met. So, when we look at the waivers, the waivers are in effect for two years. When two years is up, the states will have to reapply to have their waiver extended, assuming Congress has not reauthorized the Elementary and Secondary Education Act in the interim. As I said, they can request a waiver from these accountability provisions, but there are three requirements they have to meet in their application, which I'll get into in a minute. Go ahead.
I'm not sure, but I remember last, Tina Valletti, last week, said that Pennsylvania's waiver is being held up.
No. Pennsylvania's waiver was just approved.
Was it just?
Yeah, about two or three weeks ago.
Okay, she was saying that it had been held up.
Yeah, it had been held up, but it was literally about two or three weeks ago that they approved it.
But now we have it.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
And honestly, the holdup was the US Department of Ed wanted Pennsylvania to make some changes to bring their request into compliance with some of these requirements that they have. One of the big things that PA's waiver does is it gets rid of some of these consequences that would happen to schools that didn't make AYP, such as school choice, such as having to offer supplemental educational services. Those things were paid for by their federal Title I money. So what would happen is, you would have to divert your Title I money to paying for those things, rather than paying for educating the students in that particular school. So those requirements are gone. All the requirements about school takeovers, those sorts of things, are all gone. So that is a key change in the waiver. So I want to just go through real quickly the three requirements for the waiver application, and how PA addressed them, and which, of course, we'll get into, what are the implications for our kids and for our system. The first requirement was that the waiver has to address college and career readiness for all students. So what PA really addressed in that part of their application was, first off, adopting the PA Core standards, which are, I think, slated to go to the State Board of Ed in September. And, really, they're revised standards to the state standards that have been in place for a long time. The revisions require more critical and analytical thinking for kids, there's a bigger focus on nonfiction text reading, there's a larger focus on what's called argumentative writing, which is having to defend a position, and that's not a type of writing that's been heavily emphasized in the older standards. More emphasis on math skill development at early ages. You may remember, we adopted a new math program in grades K to 3 this year with the intention to do 4 to 6 for next year. This is really driving a lot of that. The everyday math program we have is an excellent program, however, the instructional sequence in it is not well-aligned in the upper elementary grades to the requirements in the new standards. A lot of, the new standards really are pushing some of what we would have considered to be traditionally 7th grade math down into upper elementary school. So we need to adjust what our curriculum looks like to align with the new standards. Okay? As a result, starting next year, PSSA will change, because it will be aligned with the new PA standards and reflect those skills instead. The keystones, of course, were enacted this past year, and they already were aligned with the expectations in the new standards. If you remember, just as a refresher, the keystones currently are end-of-course exams in Algebra I, Biology, and English Literature. The majority of kids are taking the Algebra I in 9th grade, but you take it when you had Algebra I, so it really could be 7th, 8th, or 9th grade, depending what year you take that course. Biology and English Lit are 10th grade exams. And I didn't put it up here, but if you recall, beginning with the class of 2017, students will be required to demonstrate proficiency on those exams in order to graduate as per state law. So we are anticipating, they are saying that we may eventually, in the next few years, also have Keystone exams in English Composition and in Civics as well. So pending funding, their plan is to implement those. So if those are fully implemented, we would end up with five Keystone exams that students are expected to demonstrate proficiency on in order to earn a diploma. Okay? The second requirement, and the one I'm going to spend the most time on, because there are the, it's, the changes are complicated, is putting it mildly, is the requirement for state-developed recognition and accountability for all public schools. The old AYP system is gone. It does not exist anymore, which is why you haven't heard any talk about what people's AYP status is up to this point. They are not using it anymore. They are implementing something called a school performance profile as the public accountability measure. The school performance profile, which is, will be released to the public, is a score calculated out of 100, and it incorporates a number of data points. It incorporates the percent proficient in math, reading, and science. So science now is going to be included as part of the accountability before the old version of the law actually said, you have to give the test in science, but it doesn't count towards AYP. Pennsylvania's going to include the science results in the school performance profile now. It will factor in the P-VAS information, which is that growth measure of did the students make a year's growth in a year's time? That's going to factor into the calculation of this score. Currently, that did not affect AYP at all. So you got credit for proficiency, but you didn't get credit for growth. The school performance profile will look at credit for both, because ideally, we want both, not just one or the other. It is going to look at still attendance and graduation rates, and also give credit for students who are achieving at the advanced level on the PSSA or keystones, and also for students who are taking SATs, students who are taking AP exams, and so forth. Because what they're saying is, that's also indication of the quality of a school system, is how many students participate in and are successful in those kinds of opportunities. Okay? Remember, Kurt had mentioned that there were a number of subgroups under the AYP system. Under the school performance profile system, there is one subgroup, and they're calling it the historically underperforming subgroup. One of the issues with the subgroups, the way they're presented in the NCLB legislation, is that kids are double-counted. You count in every subgroup that applies to you. So everybody has a race and ethnicity subgroup. If you're economically disadvantaged, you're in that subgroup too. If you're special ed, you're in that subgroup too, and if you're ESL, you're in that subgroup too. So in theory, one child could count in four different subgroups. Rare it happens, but it's not uncommon for a child to count in at least two subgroups. For the historically underperforming subgroup, this will be an unduplicated count of all students who are either economically disadvantaged, or special education, or ESL. Okay? So if a kid is more than one, they don't count more than once. And if you notice, when it says N equals 10, you know, Vince had mentioned that group of 40 meant that the larger districts would end up with subgroups, and the smaller districts wouldn't. They're dropping the number it takes to have a historically underperforming subgroup to 10 kids. There's probably pretty much no school in the state of Pennsylvania that's going to have less than 10 kids who are special ed. So that pretty much guarantees that everybody is going to have a historically underperforming subgroup. Okay?
Yeah, but can I ask you a question?
Yep.
I always applaud recognizing increased accountability, but under this new system, with all these data points that they're going to pull, districts that are diverse, districts that are economically disadvantaged, districts that have other issues that affect these things, are going to be brutalized in this profiling.
Yeah.
Even though they're great schools.
Yeah, absolutely. And another thing that's complicated with this is, honestly, I have, for the sake of doing a presentation, grossly oversimplified how all of this is calculated. There's an entire two-page document of how all of this actually gets weighted and calculated, depending on how many of these factors actually apply to your school. One of our concerns that we've been talking about is explaining where this number out of 100 comes from to the community, that people can understand how you even arrive at that number, when you might have 15 or 20 data points going into developing that number.
Well, we have a diverse district. You're going to have economic differences from township to township, borough to borough. You're going to see that now.
Absolutely, you will.
And that's, wow.
Yeah, no, it's, it is a complication of looking at subgroups when you're looking at, as opposed to just overall treatment.
And to Vince's point, in the last bullet there, only schools, not districts, receive a score. So the scores will be by school.
Right.
So if we have 13 elementary schools, 13 schools, you know, at that level, get a score.
We have 13 profile numbers.
Right.
Even though we're doing all the same things in all the same buildings.
Correct, correct. And the reason, if I remember correctly, the reason they explained for that change was because the federal No Child Left Behind law actually does not mandate district scores, it only mandates school scores. So when Pennsylvania put their waiver in, they decided to stay very close to what the federal requirement is, which is school scores, not district scores. So you will not see a North Penn School District School Performance Profile score. It won't exist. So continuing on that, they also differentiate between Title I and non-Title I schools. Non-Title I schools, so schools that do not receive Title I funding, which is, you know, for anybody who doesn't know what Title I funding is, it's funding that goes to your schools that have the highest degree of poverty, so that you can provide supplemental educational opportunities for them in literacy and math primarily. Non-Title I schools will only get their school performance profile score, and that's it. Okay? So they will get the number, and that's it. Unlike now, where every school got a label attached to it, they will only get a number. Title I schools actually have performance criteria that are a little bit different. Their performance criteria are the 95% test participation, which is what exists now, the 90% attendance rate, and 85% graduation rate, which is what exists now. The other two criteria, however, are that you are on track to close 50% of your achievement gap in six years, both overall and for your historically underperforming subgroup. And I realize that probably sounds like government doublespeak, so I put an example at the bottom. So the goal, technically, is still 100% proficient. So you take 100% proficient minus your current proficiency for that subject. So let's say the school's 85% proficient. 100 minus 85 gives you 15, your gap is 15%. So divide that by 2, get 7.5%. That's how far you're expected to go up in six years. Okay? So really, what they've done is add 12 years to when you need to get to 100% proficient, when you get right down to it. Okay?
And that's in your Title I schools. You want to just expand a little bit of how a school is designated as Title I?
Yep. When we designate schools Title I, what we, the method we use as a district, there's a couple ways you can do it, but the method we use as a district is we take the percent of students on free and reduced lunch, line up all the schools from those with the highest percentage of students on free and reduced lunch to the lowest, and you take your district average. Schools that are above the district average are the ones that we designate as Title I schools, and they receive the Title I money. We prorate the money out to them based on how many low-income students they have in their school, and that money pays for, at North Penn, supplemental reading services for the children that need them. Okay? So those schools that are designated as Title I are subject to those accountability provisions. The non-Title I schools are not. They will simply get their school performance profile score, and that's it.
How many Title I schools do we have in North Penn?
Seven. Seven elementary schools.
Four, seven.
Or is it six? Seven, seven. Seven elementary schools. Okay? And that can fluctuate from year to year, depending on what the poverty rates and the district average are. For instance, Walton Farm used to be a Title I school. They now fall below the district average, so they are not Title I anymore. So that can change from one year to the next, based on shifts in the demographics in parts of the community, as Vince was referring to.
Well, it goes farther than that, though. I mean, when you look at No Child Left Behind, and you look at the changes, in the beginning, districts could easily fix issues. Like, now, I liken it to picking apples off a tree. Anybody can reach up and take the low ones, realign your curriculum.
That's correct.
You know, enhance your training of your staff, and we've done all those things.
Correct.
When you see the leaps and bounds that we've taken to get into where we are, and some of our schools are at these markers already, it's, we don't get any credit for that anymore. That's fine.
Correct.
Don't worry about it, whatever you've done for me lately is the mentality, and it's a little frightening.
Exactly, exactly. Yeah, it is. The good news is, we don't have to be 100% proficient by the end of this year.
Well, I think in six years, they're going to change it to make it so that they have eight more years to be 100%.
Yeah, but right now, right now, to make sure that we're proficient, we are already at the level of seeking out those who need one-on-one help, and are taking them out and delivering the help they need to make sure they meet these criteria. We've been doing that now.
Right.
And that's produced results, because it's no longer, you know, curriculum changes aren't going to help you. Now you have to go one-for-one, and go after everybody who needs the additional help to get to these numbers. Remember, 100% proficient. I mean, that's everybody in that room.
And remember, remember as well, this is in place for two years, or until they reauthorize the Elementary and Secondary Education Act, whichever comes sooner. So if next year, Congress would say, okay, we're ready to reauthorize, whatever they reauthorize it to, that's the rule. Okay? One of the reasons Pennsylvania says that they delayed applying for a waiver was because there was some talk about a year and a half ago, that Congress was going to reauthorize Elementary and Secondary Education Act, and they said, we don't want to change the rules to come back and have to change the rules when the Congress decides to do something. Of course, that didn't happen, so they decided to go ahead and file for the waiver anyway. I'm not hearing, I don't know if Tina's telling you something different at the IU, Carolyn, I'm not hearing any, any serious talk that the Elementary and Secondary Education Act is going to be reauthorized anytime soon.
She doesn't think so.
I don't think so either, and quite, to be brutally honest about it, if you get to a presidential election year, and it's not going to happen in a presidential election year either. So it's...
She's as frustrated as you are.
Yes, I know. And so, all I'm saying is, in theory, this goes by the wayside if it's reauthorized. In practice, we're not hearing anything that would lead anyone to believe that it's going to be reauthorized anytime soon. Okay? So, based on how they perform on those four criteria, Title I schools, in addition to their school performance profile score, will be labeled as either reward high proficiency, reward high progress, focus, or priority. Notice, the two rewards deal with the schools that are in effect excelling either in percent proficient or value-added. Focus and priority deal with schools that are down toward the bottom of all Title I schools in the state, which leaves a lot of schools in the middle. They are going to call those schools undesigned schools. So you're going to have some school, the Title I schools that are at the top and at the bottom will have a label. The ones in the middle will be treated like the non-Title I's, in that they will not have a label attached to them. I really didn't think they could make this more complicated, but they have succeeded. So you can see, I'm not going to read it to you, but you can see the different criteria for falling into one of those categories. The ones that are in focus and priority are the ones that would receive technical assistance from the state to address the issues that are causing their achievement to be at that level. And really, they are talking about technical assistance, not about punishments. So that is a big change from the way the current system operates.
Before they didn't make the requirements, if you didn't hit the requirements, after a year...
Oh, I'm sorry, sure.
They started taking money from you. So not only are you struggling to make the requirements, now they're taking money from you to boot.
And sending people to tell you what to do.
The very interesting thing that's occurring on some scale now is, for example, under focus, you see there, the lowest 10% or graduation rate is below 60%. Well, that's a big concern. Or, in that last bullet there, test participation rate is below 95%. There are some pockets across the country where there's a movement afoot to have students not participate in tests. And that is a concern to some educators across the country, that if their participation rate drops below 95%, even though they could be achieving at significant levels and not being anywhere close to meeting any of those other criteria under focus there, if their test participation rate is below 95%, now we have an issue. So you might want to follow that closely. I've been monitoring that as you read various, you know, news articles about concerns that folks have about standardized testing and their desire to opt students out of standardized testing. If you drop below that 95%, now you just met one of those criteria. So stay tuned and watch that one closely.
But that only pertains to the lowest 10% of Title I.
No, or.
What, no, but she is correct, though, that this only pertains to Title I schools.
Right.
It doesn't pertain to non-Title I schools.
But it's an issue for Title I schools, and we have seven.
Yeah, but you could be in high proficiency and high progress and still potentially pop that 95% barrier.
Right, and that would put you in focus and not up in reward. That's exactly right. Yep, that's exactly correct. And the only other thing I want to mention that I didn't write there is, you know, we have all of this about how we calculate what the Title I schools have to do to meet these labels. There's another reality, though, that isn't explicitly addressed here, but we talked about in requirement one. If 100% of the kids don't pass their keystones, 100% of the kids won't graduate. So in reality, eventually, by the time the kids get to those Keystone grades, we need a very high percentage of them at proficient, and that obviously is always the goal, but in a way, the goal's not 100%, but it is.
But you would give some remedial...
Yes, they can, with keystones, you can provide remediation, and they can retake the test. So what happens is, it's like SATs. Their best score, when you combine the two, the best two modules, that's what determines whether or not they're proficient. So, yes, you're absolutely right, it's not a once-or-done kind of thing, but we do have to keep in mind that even though it sounds like, okay, I might only have to go up 7% over six years, in reality, I still have to get my kids to the point where they can pass the Keystone. Yeah.
Because the Regents exams and all that.
Yep.
I mean, then you have to pass them.
Absolutely.
To pass, but...
Right, absolutely.
And I don't think it mattered for the way.
Yeah.
I don't think it did either.
No.
And certainly on its face, who could argue with a goal of 100% proficiency?
Absolutely.
We will want that, of course, but when you get down in the details and you see what it is that determines proficiency, now you have debate. And I've shared the tests, you know, the released items, with parents who are very surprised to see the things that, you know, are expected of their children or children of the community in order to demonstrate proficiency. In their minds, they're thinking, well, proficiency in math, they should be able to add, subtract, divide, manipulate fractions, do percentages, you know, stuff like that. That's a very small piece of it. You start getting into concepts of algebra, some of the introductory concepts of calculus that are on those tests, and people say, wow, I have a master's degree, and I don't even know how to do that. You know?
Yep. Okay. The third requirement for the waiver application is called improving and supporting effective class instruction in school leadership. What that really comes down to is revised evaluation systems for teachers and principals. And you're seeing this, very similar systems in most of the states that have gotten waivers. I talked to some other educators in other states, and I can tell you states that have almost the identical systems that Pennsylvania is adopting. The teacher system, they're calling educator effectiveness, that is actually implemented this year statewide. The very short story on that is that it requires 50% of the evaluation to be based on different sets of student achievement data. It revises the observation portion to use what's called the Charlotte Danielson domains of effective teaching, which is something we were already using at North Penn. were already using at North Penn. Not every district was, but we were already using the Charlotte Danielson model. What it does now is takes that part, makes it 50%, and a combination of data sets ultimately, when fully implemented, will be the other 50%, okay? Principals will see something similar happen next school year. Again, 50% of their evaluation will be based on student achievement data, and they will have a revised evaluation tool that will be mandatory. Currently in Pennsylvania, there is no mandatory evaluation tool for administrators. For principals, there will be, now be a mandatory evaluation tool that's based on some national standards for school leadership called the NISSIL standards. And so it is a rubric that will be used to evaluate the principals, okay?
Do you want to get into a little more detail, if you would please, on the attribution of the students and, you know, shared classes, that sort of thing?
Yep. For the, for the teacher eval, if we stay with talking with the educator effectiveness system, the 50% that is based on student achievement data is really broken into three sets of data. One set of data is the school performance profile score. That will count for part of it. So everybody in the building will have that school performance profile score attributed to their evaluation. 15% of it will be individual teacher evaluation data based on PSSA or Keystone scores, depending what level school you're in. For that piece, it will be the teachers that that student teaches, if they are teaching reading, math, or science, okay? One of the things that Kurt's referring to is, we're in the process right now of having to go through and figure out, for students who have multiple teachers for a subject, co-taught students, students who might get reading intervention and English, that sort of thing, we have to figure out how we want to attribute those kids. Because we can split the responsibilities, so to speak. For instance, in a co-teaching class, you can decide the kids are all 50% the regular ed teacher, 50% the co-teacher. So the kids are weighted for instructional responsibility. It's up to the districts to figure out how to do that weighting. So we're in the process right now of trying to figure out how to do that weighting, knowing there'll always be case-by-case things that we need to consider. And then we have to, we have to make that determination, and in the PIM system, we have to submit that determination, there you go. You have to submit that determination for every student, for every teacher that they have for math, reading, and science. And then in the spring, there's a verification window where the teachers can go in and say, "What's in there is right or wrong, or the situation's changed since that was submitted to PIM, so we need to make a correction to it," to ensure that the students are properly attributed to develop that individual teacher data. The individual teacher data is not proficiency data, it's the growth data, okay? So what you're looking at is not what percent proficient did the teacher have. You're looking at, did their students make a year's growth in a year's time? And the reason they would choose that is because you're not looking to penalize teachers who are teaching students who struggle. So all students should be able to make a year's growth in a year's time. It may not get them all the way up to proficiency in one year, but, so that's why they chose to use that growth measure rather than using the proficiency measure. And then the last set of data is something called specific learning objectives, which the state has not implemented yet, that's coming, where we are going to have to set targets based on district-level data rather than the state test data. So it'll be the combination of those three things that three years from now will constitute the data set. If it's occurring to anybody, what happens if you're a teacher that doesn't teach reading, math, or science? The answer is, that specific learning objective part counts for more, and that individual teacher growth on the state test part doesn't count at all, okay?
So just when you thought you were following all of this, and you start to think about it, and you start to realize there are other educators in our schools other than the teacher of math or social, excuse me, science or English or whatever it might be, and you have to start to think about the impact in their evaluation, for example, for the guidance counselor, or the nurse, or the music teacher, you know? So there's a lot involved with this.
Yeah, we've been spending, we've spent the whole last year, and will need to spend the whole year this year, really dissecting this and making sure we understand what the implications are for everybody. There is, as Kurt mentioned, there is actually going to be a separate rubric next year for some of those specialist positions, like guidance counselors, like school psychologists and so forth, because the Danielson rubric focuses very heavily on observing a class, whereas some specialists, you know, I see Sally's in the back, you know, observing Sally as a nurse is very different than observing me teaching biology. So there will actually be a separate rubric for specialists that will be more tailored to the types of duties that they perform, instead of trying to stretch a classroom observation rubric to make it fit, something that it really doesn't fit very well. So this is, this is very complex in its implementation.
How many observations have gone for teacher personnel?
The system that we're moving toward, everybody is observed at least once. There are some different rules for teachers that are non-tenured and teachers that are on performance improvement plans. What we are looking at with this process is doing a full pre-conference observation, post-conference with every teacher over a period of years, so having in effect cohorts of teachers. And then the years that you're not getting the full pre-conference observation, post-conference, doing a more, I hesitate to call it informal, but a more abbreviated process in those years. So everybody will be observed. Not everybody will go through the full clinical model every single year. And the teachers will still be doing portfolios, as they have done in the past, and having portfolio conferences with their supervisors.
And the reflection piece.
And the reflection piece, absolutely.
And there too, so.
Yep, yep.
It's a very, you know, labor-intensive thing, again. I mean, all well-intentioned, good stuff, but.
Most of our principals have already started scheduling.
Absolutely.
That's how important it is. They have to do it that month. I mean, it's that pre-conference, post-conference, formal observation paperwork. I mean, it is a major undertaking for one building principal to get through 40 people.
Yep.
I mean, he's doing multiple, multiple meetings.
Wasn't there at one time a group of people that were sent in to all of the schools?
Well, it depends on the model.
You might be thinking of the data walk, you might be thinking of data walks. Data walks are not evaluative. It's really just to collect data about what's going on.
That's not a nice term.
Yeah. One of the things we are looking at is whether or not we can find an electronic tool to manage this process for us to streamline the paperwork. I know Charlotte sells hers.
Yeah, I saw it.
We're looking at the different options available.
They're here.
Okay. So, just to summarize, the waiver does give a lot greater flexibility to the states to determine their accountability systems, but it does require revisions to your curriculum and instruction, your assessment and your evaluation as requirements for approval, and it's valid for two years or until they reauthorize Elementary and Secondary Education Act. So, very complicated, a lot of information, I know, and be happy to answer any additional questions that you have.
Does it come with money?
No, as not, no more money than we already get for our titles, and frankly, that money's been going down. We've been getting sequestration and things. We have been, I think we've taken a 15% cut each year for the last two years. Is that close?
Yeah. I have a concern about the PIMS in a district this size and the amount of data, that we almost need one person just to do nothing but that.
Yeah, we do have people in technology who handle that.
But nevertheless, I mean, I think it's something that we have to think about. We don't know where it's going. I mean, they could change their mind next week again.
It is. It's a concern. It's a concern.
It is. But to me, it's a concern. As a board member, I want you to know my concern that I really, because that data, that it's harvested correctly, has to do with our future. So I just want to register that as a concern of mine and to know that I'm thinking about that.
It is, it is absolutely. Every year, they require more and more stuff to be submitted in PIMS. And I can tell you, if Robin were here tonight, she could tell you how many people in her department are involved in doing those PIM submissions. In my last district, I managed that, and it is, it's a bear.
Quickly summarize for those watching.
Oh, I'm sorry, sure. PIMS is a Pennsylvania information management system, and what it is, is a set of data that we are required to submit to the Department of Education. There's at least one submission every month at this point. The submissions are not aggregate data, so it's not just saying to them, "Well, we have this many economically disadvantaged kids or this many ESL kids." It's actually submitted on a student basis and on an individual teacher basis. So for instance, when we do what's called the course submission, where we submit every course every teacher teaches with that teacher tied to that course, I can tell you, that's about 35,000 records. You know, it's, it's a tremendous amount of data to have to manage. Pat Strowman manages, coordinates most of this. She does a phenomenal job managing this beast. And, but you're right, it is, it is, in a district this size, staying on top of that is a job. One of the things the state did volunteer very recently is that IU 13, who are the ones that are subcontracted in the state to manage some of this, they have volunteered to provide technical assistance to the larger school districts with doing this percent enrollment and percent instructional responsibility calculation, because they understand that in big districts, I mean, anytime I think I have it bad, I think, at least I'm not Philadelphia, because imagine trying to do it in a district of that size. It's, so, we do have, we are planning on contacting IU 13 to see what kind of technical assistance they can offer us.
And they've added so much more now. I mean, I think, I really worry about us. I really want us to do what we have to do, to do it correctly.
Yeah.
Hopefully, they'll build software. Technology will try to ease those PIMS.
The student information system does handle that from the, once the data's in there, there are templates she runs that are formatted like the PIMS templates. The difficulty actually comes in the processes for getting the information in there, because at some point, some real human being has to sit and enter it.
Enter data.
So for instance, when we come up with these rules for determining percent instructional responsibility, some real human is going to have to go through for every child, every teacher every child has, every teacher of math, English, and science, and plug in what that percent instructional responsibility is. So the labor piece of it actually is not so much on the back end when you pull it and submit it. The labor piece of it is determining rules, and then who's going to do the data input in compliance with those rules and do the error checks. It's massive.
And the error checking alone is a task.
It's massive, absolutely.
And it's unfunded. Sorry, I mean, that's what they do.
Yep.
Anybody want to add anything to it before I take public comment on this issue? All right, anybody wishing to speak to the board, please step forward, state your name and
Good evening. My name is William Nachor. I live in North Fork, on the name, Lansdale, Pennsylvania, and I have two children which have both graduated from the district. It's always a pleasure to come before the board. Firstly, I want to thank you for all your tireless service. Long hours and devotion to making the district into something that everyone can be proud of. The board is an example of service to all, the students, the community, and our great nation. Wherever our graduates go...
Thank you. Wherever our graduates go, they have received a solid foundation to be used in whatever their life journey takes them. Tonight, the public should be informed about the candidates that'll be elected to fill the positions for next, the term for the school board. Their views on directions and how they will lead the district, I think the public needs to be very thorough, do due diligence, ask questions, and be informed. I'd like to see a public which takes a great deal of interest, because the challenges which were presented tonight are so daunting, and the professional presentation was really incredible. I'm completely at the knowledge that you demonstrate that's what's going to be needed to guide the district. It's really an amazing job. I want to inform the public that the district has challenges that have been well documented, and those elected will have their work cut out for them, absolutely. The public is suffering from stagnant wages, part-time work forced upon them, two or three jobs. It's very difficult out there. The progress that the middle class is making is nonexistent. There are a few people which are doing very well, but there are many that are slipping further and further behind through no fault of their own. Rising co-pays for medical, very, very difficult. Starting next year, the affordable medical care will come in. I can't help but thinking how many people will get the news, "Oh, by the way, you're just going to be working 29 hours now. I have hired somebody else." So you won't be heading medical anymore, and you'll have to go to an exchange to figure out how you're going to do it, providing the state even provides that option. Some states are not even, they're ignoring the option. I know some who would like to be elected would enjoy rehiring and going back to where we were, with the cost very high. Over these last couple of years, we have demonstrated how we've become more efficient, used resources that we have in a more practical way. And I believe that these last, last years, since the economic difficulties in the countries have come forth, we've handled that extremely well. The district is doing really well, and we've reduced by attrition a tremendous number of people, which I know it would be great to be able to have them on board, but with the restrictions that we have, with the taxes and Act I, that will not be possible. I want us to focus in, as we meet these challenges, the importance of the academics. People, children in other countries are working 7:24. They don't take summers off. They're studying, studying, using technology. In Korea, I believe they'll all have laptops. They'll all be fully, I fear for where the United States is going to be if we don't maintain our position in the world as a leader. It's very, very important, and I think the public needs to be really aware of this, and I'll close. They would like to swell our labor costs, which are going up. The FICA is going up, the medical's going up. It's very, very challenging. Well, you know, I believe that the student enrollment is declining. The number of people that are in attendance at the district is actually going down.
Well, it has for about 12 years, but this year.
Oh, so that's.
This is the first time ever it's gone up.
I don't know whether that would be, you know, an indicator or just a little blip, but that remains to be seen. Transportation costs are rising, an aged bus fleet, diesel fuel near $4 a gallon. Many are retiring, so they'll not be paying into the earned income, so that we're going to have that problem. And who's going to pay for all these things? I'm not moving. I mean, I like it here in this district. So you're going to find a lot of people that retire from their jobs, they're not going to move, and they're not going to be paying any of the personal income tax. So that's going to be a real challenge. Senior citizens are worried every day. Heating oil, $3.71 a gallon, that's a big challenge for, for an 80-year-old single person that's barely making it in Lansdale. I mean, that's over $500 just to heat your house for 150 gallons. That's pretty daunting. The Affordable Medical Care Act mandates that a working spouse may not be on our medical plan. They must, if your wife is working, she needs to go to her employer's plan. They cannot pick. The district needs to go through this. I don't know if we're still doing, if we do it or not, but when the Affordable Medical Care comes in, he says, "Oh, your wife is working at so-and-so?" She needs to go on that plan. That would alleviate a lot of cost for us. We can't have people, really, the spirit of the law was written so that each person will get their own medical policy. It's not acceptable to have people picking and choosing. Okay, and finally, how many students will have no medical coverage starting in 2014 because... because, oh, their parents are working 29 hours, they don't, they don't get coverage anymore, and they don't have chips? So, how many students in the district won't even have any medical? I think this is a big problem coming up that needs to be addressed. I ask the public to vote and examine what each candidate will really want to do. Quality education does not have to be expensive. So, it's very important that the people look into the things that need to be discussed and make the best possible decision for the progress of the district. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Patel. Anyone else wishing to speak to the board, please step forward.
Good evening, my name is Paul Edelman. I'm a resident of Upper Gwinnett. I'm just seeking some information. If there is a district regulation or policy in regards to transportation involving transfer students, when a bus can easily accommodate a student riding with other students to the same school, students are often allowed to ride on other buses as needed to accommodate student safety. For instance, a parent's not going to be home, so we submit a note that the child takes to go on a different bus home. These kind of needs are always met, but if it's on a regular basis, what does a parent need to do, especially since the space is available on the bus, the student is enrolled in that school? Is there, is there a policy preventing that from happening or allowing it?
Well, we can address the transfer of attendance.
I'm going to say is that what you're asking?
Right. Transfer of attendance is someone who basically goes to another school and wants to be transferred to another, the school for whatever reason, daycare cost or employment, whatever the purpose is. If it's granted, transfers of attendance generally do not come with transportation.
Okay, but if, if the students, I mean, you're talking the student coming out of the same building as other students going to the same school.
I understand what you're asking.
The district, the district can't even allow just that one child to get on that bus?
No, no, wait, I want to make sure we're talking about the same thing. So, you're saying, you're asking a question, if somebody is granted a transfer of attendance and they are now in that school, but you're not, you're asking the question is if they use a chair, a childcare provider.
Right. They're using a childcare provider.
And then that person gets bused from there.
The bus, the bus does stop in that vicinity, picks up other students that are also going to the same school as the child in that daycare, but the child is not allowed to ride that bus.
That's actually an issue that came up recently, and we're actually looking at it right now to see if that, if that's possible. But when you're granted a transfer of attendance, you're not given the right to have transportation. I mean, that's your cause. You want to go to a special school or a different school, transportation falls on your responsibility. The question, I think, is coming up is if I use a daycare provider that already has a bus stopping at.
Right.
To be picked up to go to a school, can I also share in that? And that's the question we're trying to resolve right now.
I mean, it wasn't, it's not creating an extra bus stop.
It wasn't the issue of creating an extra bus, this question is, now you're getting transportation from a transfer of attendance which you weren't granted originally, and that's the question. And you're right, is it a burden to us or not? That's really the question.
You know, we're studying that one, Paul.
Yeah, we have to look into it.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, well, yes, it was a very thorough presentation, thank you very much for this insight. There, there is a lot of challenge ahead, and obviously, there's a lot of things that still are unwritten, so let's hope it moves forward. Next meeting is next Thursday at 7:30 for our action meeting. Motion to adjourn?
Aye.
Aye.